Welcome to Everything Co-op. Bringing you information on how cooperatives can help improve your quality of life. This show is being sponsored by the National Co-op Bank, NCB. The NCB is dedicated to strengthening communities nationwide for the delivery of banking and financial services for the nation's cooperatives, their members, and other socially responsible organizations. For more information on the power of community ownership, visit ncb.coop. That's ncb.coop. Now stay tuned for your host, Vernon Oaks.
Good morning, everybody. This is Vernon Oaks. Welcome. We have some rain this morning, but it's great. It's a great, great, great day. And we have Ms. Helen Rosenthal, who is a city councilperson from New York. Good morning, Ms. Rosenthal.
Hi, how are you?
Great. How are you doing?
Very good. Thank you. I'm excited to be on the show.
Thank you. I'm so, I'm so pleased that you took time out of your busy schedule to come and talk to us. And I see that you were born in October, and so was I. You're getting ready to have a birthday. I just had mine.
I am. Happy birthday.
Same to you. How did you get to be a city councilperson?
Oh, wow. We're gonna go way back.
What's that route like? How did that happen?
Well, one thing I would say, and I say this because good people who enjoy public policy and think it's important, especially at a time like now, should realize that there are many different paths to becoming an elected official. Everyone has their own path. And the important thing is that they embrace their own path and make it work for them. So for me, I have never been a part of the political system. You know, my first job coming out of graduate school in New York City was with the city overseeing the city's healthcare budget. So very much an administrative, a financial, and public policy job. And then became very active in my community, joined my local community board, raised my children for the next sort of 20 years after seven years with the city, and then decided that I could use the platform of an elected position to advance the policies that I think are very important, one of which is raising the boat for everyone and making sure everyone's income goes up and families are in a better situation to thrive.
Wonderful, wonderful. I had heard a definition of politicians are a group of people that come together to solve community problems.
That is very generous. I would like to take that definition.
I would too. I think too often politicians, too many politicians come into politics to see how they can benefit themselves or their family members and not solve community problems necessarily. But I get it. So you sound like you're one of those people that got into politics to solve problems and put forth the policies that you think might solve those problems. Is that right?
It's been like incredibly exciting to be able to use this platform. I think I went in thinking, okay, I have a mastery of the budget, so I'll be able to make sure that we're funding the programs that we care about and we're not wasting money in other areas, or there's no fraud and abuse. And certainly I've been able to achieve that. But as a legislator, being able to identify problems and legislate solutions is incredibly exciting and takes us so much farther than simply talking about, you know, having it be an academic experience, talking about public policy, or, you know, being in an economics class and sort of thinking, oh, what if we implement these things, it should be good. Now I'm actually doing those things or legislating them. And that's very exciting.
Fantastic. I mean, so it sounds like you rather walk to talk instead of just talking to talk.
I like to think so.
Okay.
I was at a block association meeting last night with about 30 people in someone's living room. And at the end, they say, we'd like to give you a raise. I said, okay, that's very good. Never gonna happen, but thank you for that sentiment.
They wanted to give you a raise as money to raise your salary?
To raise my salary, just on the spot. Of course, that will never happen, but I like to connect with people so that they feel that way, so they feel good about their politicians and know that their local politicians are fighting for them, especially at a time when, I mean, I don't know who your listeners are, but I feel the federal government is selling the American people short.
Oh, you said that very softly, the federal government is selling the people short. You can shout that out. I agree with that, particularly right now. But I've gotten that politicians, all politicians are for, for the people. Here's the difference, though, that too often politicians, particularly looks like Republicans, I'm not sure about this totally, they are for the people that have got them elected and those are rich people. And Democrats, not all, are for the everyday people. So the, the ones that looking for the wealthy, like this tax reform, it seemed like that's all geared, what Trump went through was for the wealthy and the rich. And that seems to be what's going on here, not for the masses of people, those that below 50% of the income line or 75%, those in poverty, that don't seem to be happening. So I like you, you're saying that when the tide rises, the boat rises, but everybody in the boat rise, not just the captain of the ship or the crew.
That's right. That's right. And there's no question that you're right, you know, that Trump leading the way, you know, that the Republicans have jumped on his bandwagon and public policy has gone in the wrong direction where, you know, he's eliminating regulations that have protected the earth. He's eroding protections for women now with this appointment. Very luckily that Roe v. Wade will be overturned. His economic policies certainly help himself and, and his clack of friends, but, you know, certainly are not helping the people who really need it, who government is supposed to serve.
We got it. We got the message. And I'm so glad that you chose to get into politics and run and create policies that get these things done.
Thank you.
Now, how, you grew up in Detroit?
Yeah.
Motor City.
Mm-hmm. Yep, best rock and roll. Grew up with the best rock and roll stations and yeah, great concerts.
So I like Motown. I, I went there in 69? No, 66. And I worked at Ford Dearborn.
Oh, wow.
For one, for nine months, I, I worked on the assembly line, and I realized that I would not do that for the rest of my life, and I went back to college. But I liked it.
But what a great time to have that job, though, actually.
It was awesome.
Yeah. Where did you live?
A couple places. I lived with some family members, and then I got a place, and I got another place, and I can't tell you anymore.
No, but I mean, did you live in Detroit or Dearborn?
Oh, I lived in Detroit. I know, I live right, I live right in Detroit. And my brother came up from Kentucky State too, when I was there, and he got a job. And he, he raised his family there, sort of.
Wow.
Close to, close to Motown is where he raised his family. And so go back there now and look at the blighted housing that you would have, you know, given an arm for in the 60s and 70s. It is, it's sad. It's really, really sad. But you left Detroit and migrated.
I did, but, yeah, but when I was there, my mother, as an adult, got her PhD at Wayne State, and she studied the riots, the 67 riots. She was a sociologist. And her topic was rumor control during the riots. So if you could imagine back then, 66, 67, 68, that there were no, you know, cell phones, no way to communicate with each other except by phone or by watching the news, the city set up a rumor control hotline. So if someone was, you know, living on the street, wanted to go grocery shopping a couple blocks away, they could call the rumor control hotline and say, I want to go grocery shopping three blocks away. Is it safe for me to walk there now?
Wow.
And, um, yeah, and we just, she learned so much from that, and it's definitely shaped the way I think about things.
So your mom went back and got her PhD. My mom went back and graduated when I was 13 from Bluefield State College. We, I grew up in Bluefield, West Virginia.
Oh.
She had six kids, and she graduated magna cum laude. But unfortunately, as a black woman, she could teach. She, I didn't find out until she passed away, and I was going through her, her stuff, that she, her degree was in, she had a business administration degree. I didn't, I never knew that.
And she did teach?
She taught, yes.
Yeah, so did my mom.
Okay.
Same thing.
Both born in October, moms of teachers, go back to school and become our.
Exactly.
Our heroines, our heroes, they, yeah.
That's right. How she arose.
So how, how, how did you get to know anything about this co-op world? How did you get that knowledge?
Well, interestingly, you know, when I was a little girl, my mom put me in a co-op nursery school. And so really integrated into my bones is understanding what a worker cooperative does and how it can be so beneficial to the families or, or the, the earners, you know, the family earners who participate and can have a more humane, respectful, and well-paying job experience compared to another setting. So I grew up with that as a guiding philosophy. And when several organizations in New York City who are developing worker cooperatives came to the New York City Council to talk about what they've been doing and what they've been able to achieve, it immediately caught my attention and, you know, I was sold at hello.
Okay. Hello, okay, where do I sign?
Yeah, exactly. That was exactly right. Yes.
So you've introduced the word worker cooperative. So for people out there that don't know, I want to give four quick definitions on co-ops, four different types of co-ops. So co-ops can be any business you can think of, can be a cooperative. If it's owned and controlled by the people that work there, the employees, it's called a worker cooperative. So if the employees own the business, control the business, then it's a worker cooperative. If the people that uses the products or services own and control the business, it is called a consumer cooperative. The consumers own and control the business, credit unions, housing co-ops, but any business. Sometimes childcare could be a, a consumer business where the parents own the co-op, and sometimes it's a worker cooperative where the employees own it. Same thing for food co-ops. Most of the time, they are consumer co-ops, but sometimes the employees will own it, or you get a hybrid where it's owned by the consumers and employees. The other two, very quickly, Helen, is the producer co-ops or those co-ops are purchasing co-ops, the purchasing co-ops is what I'm thinking about. Purchasing co-ops are, a lot of farmers will come together and they will buy their seed or fertilizer or gas or even equipment together, and they can get normally buy in volume and get a lower price and better quality because they have people working in that co-op to understand the vendors and, and the products that they're buying. So also artists are beginning to use this purchasing co-op, and they may buy a house where they can live in, or they may buy a studio, or if they're making things, they may buy a warehouse where they can make it, and then a storefront where they can sell. So those are the three. And then the fourth one is a marketing cooperative. And that's farmers, they're the bigger ones, they, they 90, 900 farmers, I think, own cabbage cheese, and it's much more than that now. But Cabbage Cheese or Organic Valley, Ocean Spray are examples of farmers come together and create a business, and they take their product there, and those businesses will add value to them, make butter, cheese, milk, whatever, and then they'll have more markets they can sell to. So those are the four types, and you get the same things that you were talking about, benefits to the members. And more often it's not, oh, let me give you this quote, and then I'll let you talk about your experience. But a lady by the name of Dame Pauline Green was on air here, and she said that co-ops help people to come out of poverty with dignity. And I like that quote a lot, and that's what we can find when you say people raised in the boat. But those are the four types, and you were talking about worker co-ops, but New York is also known for their housing co-ops. Do you work at all with the housing cooperative?
I have a number of housing cooperatives in my district, but that is not something that this administration is currently promoting. But housing cooperatives were, were used as a mechanism back in the, I think in the 80s, when there was city-owned property, or perhaps city-owned because a building had gone into default, where the city had, and, and squatters moved in to a building. And what the city did was sign leases with those squatters, where they gave them ownership of the building and a very generous tax reduction on the property, with the understanding that those owners would manage the building together and bring it into a state of good repair and abide by affordability rules whereby an apartment, an apartment could not be sold for more than a certain amount of money, and people below a certain income level were eligible to purchase an apartment.
You know, that sounds kind of like some of the work that's done here in the district. And there's a gentleman that there, there's an organization called U-HAB, U-H-A-B.
Mm-hmm.
In New York.
So you have had a contract with the city to help these newly-formed housing cooperatives to learn how to keep their buildings in the black and, you know, be able to live within their budget. And, and that was part of the model, so yeah.
Yeah, well, they're still very much in existence, and there's a group down here that city councilperson, I always give a shout out to Anita Bonds. She just formed an LEC Task Force, that's a limited equity cooperative task force, to look at the problems of limited equity co-op and then make, make solutions, or recommendations for solutions. And we're going to have Mr. Riker come down and speak to us in a week or two on his experiences in New York, so we can share this information. So just finding out ways how to get folks out of homelessness, or those people, too often they're working poor.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yes, for sure, for sure. I, there's a good percentage of people in our homeless shelters in New York, many families that are the working poor. They have, you know, full-time minimum wage jobs and can't afford to find an apartment here. But back to the council member who's looking at limited equity ownership for people, you know, it, it might, I, I think it's great that you're having U-HAB come and, and talk about the experience that New York City has had, because I think in retrospect, New York City, the government did these buildings a disservice by not investing in the buildings themselves, not helping those new owners to put those buildings into good repair. And so the burden of repairing the buildings, you know, just basic infrastructure, boilers, plumbing, you know.
Electricity roofs.
Electricity, yeah, exactly. That stuff, there wasn't enough money given to those new owners who were, you know, low-income working families who had the new ownership. They didn't necessarily have the means to do those repairs. So over time, interestingly, the housing cooperatives in poorer neighborhoods have not really been able to get off the ground. But the housing cooperatives in neighborhoods that are wealthier have been able to, I believe, skirt the rules and sell some of their apartments for now a tremendous amount of money. And with that income, they've been able to do the repairs, to leave their buildings in better shape. So then you're faced with this conundrum of, oh, it's not 100, 100% affordable, this building anymore. They had to flip some of the apartments, which were not part of the original deal.
Right. Well, that's part of the problem. There's a couple groups here, Mana and Mikasa, two nonprofits that have helped to come in and renovate housing. And I'm a property manager, that's where I learned about co-ops. I was not fortunate enough to live in a, in a co-op as a kid. I didn't find out about it going through school. There was no education. It was 25 years ago when I started managing housing. I found this co-op, this motto, and I fell, fallen in love with it, and that's why we do this show. I also find that a lot of people don't know about them. So when somebody like you, I found out that knows about them and it's in their soul. Okay? It's wonderful. But Andy Riker is his name, I think I misspelled, from U-HAB who's coming down. But 15 years, like I've got a senior citizen, a 16-unit senior citizen, we're in downtown DC right now. One bedroom is 350 to 450, and a two-bedroom is like from 4, 450 to 550. And they were doing extremely well, except now, after 16 years, we've got HVACs that are starting to break down, and there's some roofing issues that are starting to happen, and they haven't been able to save because they made it that you could only make $1,000 a month and be over 62 to come in. Well, if somebody's making $1,000, if you got 350 coming out or 450, that doesn't leave a lot of room for savings to take care of these things.
That's right.
So even if the renovation had been done, now I can even imagine those buildings that there was no renovation done. But even when the renovation is done, after a while, if you don't have the way of creating this reserve or savings, they're, they're finding themselves, as they're finding out, beginning to run out of money.
So one of the things that, as you say, there are a number of models of worker cooperatives, one thing that I think is really important is the training component, so that the people who are owners are aware of the importance of reserves. You know, this is why this is so important and why you have to start managing it, managing for it right from the get-go. And that initial training is so vital.
Could you say that a little bit louder?
Sure. Right, right, right. So, I mean, go ahead.
No, the, the, there are seven cooperative principles, and number five, the fifth principle is training information, to get information out, and that becomes critical. Now, have you heard the name Dr. Jessica Gordon-Limhart?
Mm-mm, no.
She teaches in New York. I just lost it, university where she teaches, and she wrote a book called Collective Carriage, and I'd encourage you to get that book. It talks about the history of cooperatives in the African-American experience.
Yes, yes.
And it's a huge history.
That I'm familiar with. Yeah, wonderful history. Wonderful history, and that's definitely where the worker cooperative movement came from in the United States.
She teaches at John Jay. Okay.
Oh, great.
And she's extremely busy because she's always on the circuit, but she just has a great, great, and the reason I brought her up is, she said a lot of co-ops in African-American experience, it started with training, with education, and she called them like education beads or something, where people come together and get education. And whenever they got into trouble, when something started happening wrong, they would go back to these education beads, these, these huddles where they, they continue to learn. That becomes extremely critical.
That's great. And then another part of the history is then southern farmers and the owners of electricity then co-opted the worker co-op. That's not really the right word, but sort of became worker cooperatives also. So you had those two different models and two different purposes, different tracks. And, you know, for a long time, I think, especially with electricity, it's what kept a small number of people very wealthy in owning the electricity, but they were established as worker cooperative.
So you had the rural electric cooperatives who had the electric grid for 75% of the land, and they're in 80 counties, 80% of the counties in the US.
Wow.
So it's huge, and it was people coming together. Now, they did get help in the 30s and 40s with some monies from the federal government to help start these. But the people that had money in the urban area for electricity, they thought it was not profitable to go out into the rural areas. So, and these electrical co-ops are consumer co-ops, so the people that used it, the electricity, those households, those farms, those are the ones that own these rural electric co-ops. And that's amazing history, just tremendous history and story. In a minute or so, we're going to have to take our first break, and I would like to come back and talk about the work you've done, the laws you've passed to create worker co-ops in New York. So, well, he just told me we got two more minutes. Okay.
Okay.
There, there's another group, when you talk about farmers, it's called the Federation of Southern Co-ops. And those are in the 13 southern states in the black belt, which are mostly black people, very poor country, Mississippi, Alabama. And they created a co-op in the 60s, coming out of the civil rights movement. They've been on the air, and they told me stories like the white farmers would not sell them gas because they wanted to vote. And if they went out to vote, then they wouldn't.
Oh, my goodness.
So they created their own worker co-ops, and they bought a truck, and they went across state line and bought gas, and they came back. So there were the problems.
And voted.
And the cooperators, by cooperating and working together, sharing resources and talents and skills and knowledge, they could, they could overcome this stuff. Yeah.
That's fantastic. That's fantastic. Yeah, you're right. It has a great history.
Well, it's fantastic to talk to you. We're going to take our first break, and we'll be right back. Welcome back, everybody. This is Vernon Oaks. The National Corporate Bank sponsors this program. They've been a sponsor for the last five years. Not only have they helped with the money, but they really helped to motivate us when we came to them with an idea, and we were only going to do it for one month, the month of October, which is Cooperative Month. And NCB's mission is to support and be an advocate for America's cooperatives and their members, especially in low-income communities, by providing innovative financial and related services. And Ms. Helen Rosenthal is our guest today. She's a city councilperson for the city of New York. She was elected in 2013. She represents the Upper West Side, which includes, is that Central Park?
Yep.
Your leading voice on issues like gender equality, civic engagement, affordable housing, education equity, and adequate funding for social service programs. Thank you again for being on.
So my pleasure. It's, you know, just delightful chatting with someone who is so incredibly knowledgeable about worker cooperatives. I'm learning a lot, so thank you for having me on.
Great, great. How many, you said you raised your children. How many children do you have?
Two.
Two, how old?
25 and 22.
Okay, any grandchildren yet?
No, no.
Okay.
No, but don't tell them, but I'm, I'm counting the days.
I know, that's right.
I'm ready when they're ready.
That's right. Okay.
But please, to your audience, don't tweet that out.
The reason I asked the question is, everything you're doing today, I assume from talking to you, is geared toward how we leave the world for them. Does that sum up, sum to your work and why you do your work?
You know, sure. And I love my kids, and I definitely worry for my grandchildren, especially when it comes to climate change.
Yep.
And I think that how the government takes care of those who are struggling the most will have a tremendous impact on how quickly we succumb to climate change. So it's true for our country, and it's, it's true for the world. And to the extent that we are continuing to pollute our earth, continuing to use fossil fuels, it is to the detriment of our children and our children's children. So, yes.
Okay. I couldn't have said it any better, and I really appreciate it, what you said and how you said, and I already understand how you got 87% of the vote, 87.3% of the vote in 2017. Yeah, it's wonderful. They say that you have gotten more votes than anybody else in New York political world, is it?
Well, yes.
Okay, be humble, okay? Yes, all right.
No, I'm very proud of that, and our office works really hard for our constituents.
Great, and it's a pleasure having to talk to you, and I see why you, you get the vote that you get. So tell me about how you created laws to help worker cooperatives. I got it in your blood since you were a kid, but what kind of laws did you create, and how did, what was that process like?
Well, that's a great question, because as a legislator, that's very separate from being on the administrative side, where a mayor or an executive really decides. being on the administrative side where a mayor or an executive really decides how to spend a municipality's money and where to focus that spending. In New York City, we have a little bit of latitude on the budget side and we have obviously quite a bit of say when it comes to legislating. When I first brought up this issue in 2014 with all of the advocates for worker cooperatives, it was not something that was well-known and it faced many hurdles. And the lowest hanging fruit for us were two things. One, to, for me to ask my colleagues if they would support a citywide effort of funding about a dozen nonprofit organizations that work to set up, to educate, to provide financial support, access to credit for working, for worker cooperatives. And I have 50 colleagues. We each represent about 170,000 people. So for a city of 8.5 million, there are 51 of us. And I was able to convince them that for the little bit of money that the city council has to allocate citywide, we should dedicate some of that funding to this model of lifting people in a way where they could be really in control of their own lives versus working for companies that don't look out for them in any way, shape, or form, and instead treat them as expendable. And my colleagues, I really appreciate them very much because they were all on board. They voted to choose this initiative as one that would be funded that year. That was for the fiscal year 2015 budget. And we put in $1.2 million to fund, I forget, it was eight or 10 nonprofit organizations that had already begun to think about how to help worker cooperatives. And those organizations pledged to start within the first year, 20 new worker cooperatives and tried to employ or have as worker owners at least 100 people. And they laid out a strategic plan for how they would get there. And we funded them and proceeded to track their work. And at the end of that first year, I think they had given information to over 1,000 people, had gotten around 20, it might've been a little less, worker cooperatives off the ground. And those worker cooperatives were able to employ just under 100 people. So they proved they could do what they said they were going to do. At the same time, I wanted to get the administration's attention on this issue.
Can I stop you a second? I'm sorry.
Sure.
I think you need a clap because to get 20 worker co-ops started in a year or 19 or 18, how many, 15, five, is phenomenal. So that tells me that there was some people already in a pipeline because they have to get that training, they have to get set up, they have the legal, da-da-da-da-da, the marketing and all of that stuff to put together. So to have a little less than 20 and employing over 100, I think you just need a shout out and say, "Hallelujah." That's great. Okay.
Thank you. We put in $1.2 million for these organizations to do that work. And over that time, they also, yes, you're right, they were, they already had some worker cooperatives in the pipeline. That's what gave them confidence that they could meet that target of 20. And during that year, they set up new worker cooperatives to be in the pipeline for the following year. And indeed, the next year, my colleagues were convinced and they agreed to put in that year, $2.1 million.
Almost doubled, fantastic.
The investment. And that year, the groups were able to start up 17 new worker cooperatives and have 164 new hires.
164 workers.
New hires, yeah. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So by the end of the second year, we had employed 300 people who would have otherwise worked at what would have been dead-end jobs. But now we're worker owners, we're part of a team and had a network around them to support them so they could have dignity in their work. And we found over time that the average pay per hour is $25 an hour. And these are people who otherwise would have had...
Wait a minute, you need to shout, $25 per hour?
Yeah, otherwise would have had minimum wage jobs, dead-end jobs, where there would be, you know, well, let me say it in a positive way. With the worker cooperative as worker owners, there's more understanding for someone's family life if there's a sick one and you have to stay home for that. There's somebody to cover you, much more generously than in another workplace, a more...
I wish you could see me, I'm dancing out here in the studio because...
You know, that's funny you say that because when we were able to achieve these things, I too did the happy dance. So I'm with you again, this October thing.
$25 an hour. See, I wanted to get that to Bernie Sanders. I really tried to get him on and said, "You're talking about $15 minimum wage." And that is trying to get these other employees to raise this. I mean, the McDonald's and Walmarts and all of these, to try to get them to raise the minimum wage. And it throws their motto way off for their profit.
That's right.
And in a book, have you seen a book, Communities Creating Wealth?
Oh, no. Sounds good.
By Democratic Collective Collaborative, Democracy Collaborative. You go on their webpage and you can get it free.
Okay, and that's, I think they're based in New York, no?
I think University of Maryland is where they were. I'm not sure. There's a lot of this going on.
Well, and also many of the groups have the word democracy in their titles.
Yes, I get them confused.
We fund one, a group with that in their title.
So they talked about a lady named Christina out of New York who was doing maid service and she was making seven bucks an hour. And she got into a cooperative and her salary went to 20 bucks.
Exactly. And she was treated with respect by her co-owners.
What she ended up doing was working less hours so she could raise her two kids.
That's right.
Okay, so she had choice in the matter. She made more money and now she can choose how she spends her time. And the whole society, the whole world is better off because mom is spending more time with her children and raising her children and she's making the money she needs and she feels good about herself. It goes on and on and on. Why don't more people know about this word, "co-op"? Thank you for being on. Okay.
Well, but that's the exact point, is that the trickle it has into the community is culture-changing, is gives a community an opportunity to thrive. And, you know, we all know that women are the glue to the family and women are the glue to a community. And to the extent that you can support a woman in that way, she's still a housekeeper. You know, that's her job. She, that's a great job. She should take pride in that job. But instead of being treated poorly and paid low wages, she can hold her head high and can spend more time, as you say, with her family and therefore be a positive contribution to her community.
Absolutely. And the money stays in the community. And a little bit I got out of my economics class, the more times the money turns in the community, the better the communities are. So in a co-op, it turns five to eight times. In a regular one, if she was working for somebody else, the likelihood she spent it on her way back home and it never even got, at best it turned one time in the community and it's gone.
Yeah.
So everything you can think about, it works for the community, for enhancing the community. Thank you for getting it in your bones. So how did you get them people to say yes, though? That's the, you said there was a lot of...
Well, it was a funny story. I actually, so I passed what I passed, what I was able to get the administration to sort of agree to, the sort of middle management administration to agree to was a reporting bill. So we could ask the small, the Department of Small Business Services to report on not only the work that these nonprofits were doing, but the work they were doing to support worker cooperatives. And they agreed to that. But the best day was when we had the bill signing. And, you know, the mayor of New York is a busy guy and I understand he has a lot on his plate and there are a lot of things to think about. And we passed a lot of bills and I get it, he didn't necessarily pay that much attention to this bill coming along. But on the day of the bill signing, we were at the fancy hearing and, you know, a lot of press around and, you know, really exciting. But he's clearly reading his notes sort of for the first time. And I had been, really had to fight hard to get this bill passed and then for the mayor to sign it. He's about to sign the law, but he's reading out loud what the bill does. And you can see the expression on his face change from one of, you know, his regular face to, "Oh, my God, this is so exciting. We're doing worker cooperatives." And he looked over at me and he said, "Oh, leave it to Rosenthal to do what my heart really believes in, these worker cooperatives. This is so great." And, you know, I could not help but shoot a look at some of his staff, like, "I told you so. This is a good thing." And since then, the mayor has really been on board. What's interesting now, and it was something I'd like to make sure we cover before the end of the show, is that over the last four years, on the city council side, we've continued to be supportive and fund these nonprofits more and more money every year in order to build more. And we've had great success in New York. But this approach is very much a bottom-up approach. It's individuals who, you know, maybe want to start a catering company but don't know how to do it as a worker cooperative model, take classes, learn how to do it, and then start their own worker cooperative. Or we've started and then attracting more worker owners to the cleaning business, the house cleaning business, and also the caretaker business. So that's been very exciting. But in the last year, the mayor has brought in a new deputy mayor. His name is Dr. Phil Thompson. I don't know if you know him, but he's been a wonderful academic. He taught at MIT, but also has been very active in starting worker cooperatives, but from a different perspective, from the perspective of, okay, we have New York City government and we do things like have many public schools that we need furniture for.
Right.
And so his notion is, oh, let's start a worker cooperative factory where people come in, they come in as worker owners, but they're already guaranteed business with the city so that we know they can be successful. So he's thinking about it from the perspective of furniture for schools. He's working with the hospital, the local hospital association, and of course with our, you know, city-funded hospitals to see if we couldn't build furniture for hospitals as well. So he's bringing this different perspective to the worker cooperative model that's really very exciting and a different approach, but similarly will lift the people who get those jobs and who become worker owners in those, what will be factories, really. Again, rather than a minimum wage or a low-wage, you know, paying job, now they'll be owners of this business. And then the third model, go ahead.
I just wanted, I don't know if you've heard of Evergreen Cooperatives in Cleveland? Okay.
Yes, and he comes from that model.
Oh, good. Okay.
Yes, yes. I think he worked there. And then the other thing that we're trying to get off the ground now is someone from one of the nonprofit groups called the ICA Group, working closely with another group, I just want to get their name, called Democracy at Work Institute. They both are, those two organizations are working together to convert businesses that already exist into a worker cooperative model so that the current owner, yeah, converts and sells it to the workers. And we're doing that hopefully with a school bus company, which would be really exciting.
Wow, because it says, my birthday, I was 71, so I'm one of the baby boomers. But they said it's 50%, I think it's 50, it's a huge number of businesses, small businesses in the US that are owned by baby boomers or senior, there's another term, silver lining or some word that they use for us. And it's like, too often, these businesses will, if the family members don't want them and less and less family members are wanting them, and then if they can't find a seller, then they close. And then these people lose their jobs and that business goes away. And we're trying to figure out how to get to these business owners so that they know, here's another option, sell it to your employees.
Yep, yep. And we will help your employees run the company successfully.
Absolutely. With the ecosystem, that networking that you're talking about, the training and everything that needs to go into it. Phenomenal, really great. So three different ways of doing this.
So that's really exciting, yeah.
So you talked about the one where the ladies now are getting $25 an hour.
Men and women, yeah.
Men and women, okay.
Right. I mean, we have, so right now, there are, hang on, one, two, three, four, five, six, as I say, over a dozen nonprofits that are helping these worker cooperatives get off the ground. And the worker cooperatives themselves are, and you name the business and they've got a worker cooperative that exists in that area. For example, there's OSHA Training Worker Cooperative. That is, so you would train laborers to make sure they have their safety training to go work on a job. That's a worker cooperative. Another one is a dog-walking worker cooperative. Another one is called Black Women Artists, a couple of daycare businesses, a whole bunch of cleaning services, different types of cleaning services, many of which are environmentally driven, one called Green Fiend Organics, a printing shop, a production studio, a technology and web building company. So all sorts of businesses that can get off the ground in the, using the worker cooperative model. And I know, although I don't think we necessarily helped with this, but there is a national company that makes ladies lingerie. It's called Hinky Pinky.
Okay.
And they pride themselves on all manufacturing being done in the United States. And a couple of years ago, they sold to their workers. And it was the exact story that you're talking about where they were getting older, they were getting ready to retire. It was two women who were partners. And they began working with one of these nonprofit organizations to help their workers take it over. And it's been incredibly successful.
So are they housed in New York or how did you find about them?
Yes, they have a manufacturing base in New York City, in Brooklyn, actually.
So what you've just done is you've just helped the definition I got for worker cooperative. It can be any business you can think of. You just gave examples of business all over the map, large, small, it doesn't, national, local, five people, two people walking dogs, or cleaning houses, or making web pages, or manufacturing, it just doesn't make any difference. I'd like to see more government printing shops or businesses become worker-owned, whether it's Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac. Freddie Mae, Freddie Mac, it doesn't, whatever the business is that you're, that New York City is doing to helping people provide services, what would it look like if those businesses were owned by those people doing the work? And they hold each other accountable. That's what causes them to work so much better anyway. And they know what they can do to improve productivity. That's why you can go from seven bucks to 20 bucks or seven bucks to 25, is because you're sharing the profit and they become better run.
Yes, yes, absolutely, 100%. I mean, that's, that's why it's a win-win-win-win all around the place. Because if the worker owns the business themselves or a printing or a government... or, or a printing or a government, you know, regulator, whatever the institution is, everyone, I mean, I, you know, do it myself. You care more if your name is on the line. You know, you care more if your, you know, your future income is on the line and could be higher if you worked more strategically. Not necessarily harder, but more strategically. And if by working more strategically, you brought that income home to your family, it's going to be better-run just by definition.
We only have another minute left. I do want to quickly say that in the tradition of cooperative founders, cooperative members believe in the ethical values of honesty, openness, social responsibility and caring for one another. And that also fits in with everything that you've just talked about. But what would you like to lead people with?
There are a lot of agencies, organizations that want to help worker cooperatives get off the ground. They are a tried and true model. If there are elected officials out there who are willing to invest in them, they will have great success. And if you're a worker who's thinking about joining with others to become a worker cooperative, take the leap, it's worth it.
Take the leap. Well, I look forward to meeting you, Ms. Rosenthal. We can do a happy dance together.
That's right, that's right. Well, it was such a pleasure chatting with you. It's so nice to be talking with a kindred spirit.
Do you like what you do?
Love, love my job. I, it's a really great fit. There are term limits in New York City, so this is my last term. And it makes me motivated to do even more and to frankly, make sure that the worker cooperative funding becomes institutionalized over the next three years.
Okay, so, so what I get is your term limit is up for being a city councilperson, but there's some other role for you. I mean, it could be mayor, okay? It could be something else, but his term limit is up. But go for it. I look forward, all right, great things. Keep going.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate you.
Thank you so very much. And everybody out there, please have a wonderful, wonderful week and live cooperatively.
Thanks.
Thank you.